Good morning. The Prairie Ranch GCD is being brought to the record through the public hearing and all in permanent form of application. I was moving with harder, but our friends are here to help you.
If I could, uh, I didn't have a chance to visit with the beforehand. We would like to rule the permit hearing to follow me right away. I think there's some questions that our attorney consultant want to discuss. So if you don't mind. I think you have to get closer than I was. We do have public comment requests from Matt Benjamin. And Peter. With Collier and Associates. Are y'all wanting to speak on the agenda items or wait for the perfect hearing?
Thank you. Move on to item number four, Cincinnati agenda, all in the change motion. Most maiden second real pre-work agenda, all over the papers, say aye. Aye. Close the pose. Motion period. Given about five, consider an act on resolution. The best double O five in the real. Honoring Dennis Fairknott is just the correct. Get your motion. Most maiden second. I mean, the regulation to deal deal zero five, all over the papers, say aye. Close pose. Motion period. Another straight financial.
Yes, can everyone hear me okay? Is it coming through now? Okay, I'm gonna start with the update on administrative and financial activities. The district is transitioning into our new building very nicely. We welcomed a couple of new faces to the district in the last thirty to forty-five days. You may have seen a couple of ladies recently that you haven't seen previously. First of all, Kaylin Garcia joined us in August as part-time as our staff assistant. She's the patient, you see, at the front door, she come in, she's working to answer phones, handles the majority of our well restoration, so forth. In addition, we hired Carol Bowers effective October first. She will be working with permitting as a permitting assistant. And this is following moving Annette Kenny up into the interim permitting director position. So please tell them welcome if you still. Now they're enjoying being here so far, so don't scare them off yet. If you don't mind, I'll just move into review of the third quarter investment report. Everyone should have in their packet a copy of the investment report prepared by our bookkeeping. This details the district's banking and checking account balances and securities pledge to those accounts. As shown, all funds of the district are adequately covered through FDIC insurance and pledged, including a letter of credit from federal home loan bank with Citizens National. First item today is review and discussion of proven resolution twenty twenty dash zero zero six, reviewing our investment policy and investment strategies. The Public Funds Investment Act requires that the board annually review the investment policy and investment strategies for the district and report any changes made to either the investment policy or those strategies. Amendments proposed today include updates to six and seven to clarify authorized investments and remove language not applicable to the Public Funds Investment Act. Other additions include identifying independent sources for investment training under section one point eleven and some non-substantive edits. It was following the budget committee's review of this amended policy that's included in your packet that they had made a recommendation for this board to approve those draft amendments as we do. Next is consider an act on resolution twenty dash zero zero seven, adopting water use fee rate schedule for twenty twenty-one. Again, the Budget and Finance Committee met, we met twice since our last board meeting, once on the sixth of October, followed by meeting last week on the fifth ten. During these meetings, we did review current and projected financial needs of the district. Based on the reviews of historical and projected financial requirements, it is the Budgets Committee's recommendation that the board continue with the water use fee at twenty cents for each one thousand gallons of groundwater used annually for non-agricultural purposes.
A motion to approve resolution twenty dash zero zero seven. Which maiden second really consider the resolution twenty zero eight seven. Close pose. Motion period. But nine twenty-one, the board recessed, told the director session in exception five five one and oh seven one, Texas government code, consult with a legal counsel. And item then play to Jim. No final action will be taken by the closed session. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will reconvene to open session. Board is now reading, opening the open session. Move on to item number eight.
Chairman, the rules committee met on October the first and discussed possible dual investment for the committee. And with that, I'll turn that over to Ryan Sledge to give a brief summary of those proposals.
Yeah, the absence of our chairman. The primary recommendations coming from the committee have to do with one, removing the individual limit on wells that are part of a well system with a square use permits. Presently, the rules have both a store use maximum authorization system as well as for the individual wells within that system. The recommendations to remove the individual store use limits for the individual wells within the system. Also, as we get ready to implement the new funding structure that goes into effect in twenty twenty-one. We have some recommendations on eliminating some of the early payment disincentives as folks have to pay. Now, anyway, in the live election, emergency services discount in favor of the twenty percent reduction that now will be available, up to twenty percent rebate, excuse me, refund. Refunds will be available at the end of the year, the payment system goes to effect. Going with that twenty percent approach, this preferred approach. There's also a number of other minor, maybe not. Rules, reference numbers, suspend small acts, identify. Just looking at the rules from the lab here. So for that, Mr. President, we would recommend that the board authorize the general managers to publish rules amendments to have a hearing on conjunction with the government board.
I hear motion. Some most maiden second, that's who has been the manager to carry out. All over the papers, say aye. Close pose. Motion period. That's all, we move on to item number. Update on public outreach activities, education, conservation efforts.
We, I will keep this brief because I know we still have several other important items to discuss. Just a few updates, working on hopefully finalizing and publishing the fall twenty twenty edition of our newsletter, I hope by the end of next week. Another big item I want to point out is that Prairie Ranch GCD will have a virtual exhibit during the TWCA Fall Conference later this week. So this virtual exhibit will be accessible by the conference registrants and it's going to feature the demonstration video that I made inside of our water education trailer. It will also include information about the district as well. A couple other little things. If you notice when you walked in this morning, we have a new pop-up banner out front. I have two other banners that we created, one about rainwater harvesting and one with an overview of what the district does in order to help conserve, protect, and enhance our ground part. So the rainwater harvesting banner will actually be outside with our rainwater harvesting demo during our open house today, so I encourage you to go and take a look at that one. I'm also working on some other educational promotional signage now that we're here, instead of building. Just starting to work on getting some of those finalized. Some events coming up. Of course, we have today's open house event and then the TWCA Fall Conference this week. I also have the Bluebonnet R C D annual meeting on October twenty-third. The water education trailer was scheduled to be at Venus Elementary last week. I unexpectedly was out of office that day, so I'm rescheduling that event hopefully next two weeks. The teacher was visiting with her principal about another day that would work. I'll also be presenting to the Fossil Rim Wildlife Center staff on November fourth and then our presentations for the Avila Garden Club on November nineteenth. And then on Friday afternoon, I'd already published this report, but Friday afternoon, I actually scheduled an event for April at a private elementary and a middle school in Chin. So already got some things on the radar for the spring. So just a few updates about some of our initiatives and events going on. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. Okay, we'll move on to item number ten, groundwater management area. There's no updates, our next meeting is scheduled for October twenty seventh, twenty twenty. And I, yeah, and maybe. Oops, three years been waiting on from. Started belt board to look at those and make special possibility for the resolution to adopt open sound deeper conditions going to on the eight. So. We move. May twenty seventh. That's all I have. Right? Question, we move on to item eleven. I played the discussion of practice groundwater production zones, designated water.
You recall, we talked about this at a previous meeting and the district did submit comments to the raw water development court on its rulemaking for brackish groundwater production zones, requesting that they include a process by which a district or somebody else petitioned water development court to modify the boundaries of those zones based on improved information that type of information was discovered. They haven't made any final decisions on those rules yet, but we're monitoring that. They're hoping that they will be responsive to our.
Thank you, Grant. Move on to item number twelve. Replacement well permit, any applications we discuss and considering play action. Most water or replacement well to be located in O A D S O P L. Well, as opposed to.
We have to add to that, we said the replacement well, public water supply is presently located in Oakley Trail Department.
But especially, I think we had this. Or this is the, the. Proposed well, they have their existing moment down, this proposal as a replacement. Just stay in the shoes of the existing.
If there is no other discussion, we. Based on unique circumstances involved with this application, including the infrastructure investments and well related facilities that we that were made prior to the adoption of the district's rule, well as the limited impacts anticipated to determine the cost of the city's ordinance prohibiting the drilling of wells within the city limits. A move for approval of the application and I'll note that this approval only speaks to the authorization of the district's rules that may also be applied in the case of two proceedings. All over the papers, say aye. Close pose. Motion period. Item number, those things.
That too, we'll keep our report brief today, just a few things to point out. As I mentioned last month, by rule seven point one, the district must adopt a fee rate schedule for the year, which we did today at twenty seven thousand gallons for non-agricultural purposes. Following today's motion, we will be sending out notices to our water user base, letting them know that the fees have remained untracked for previous years. In addition to that, we are required to send invoices forty-five days out, cards of here to all of our property base, alerting them to what their end of water use fee. So we'll be working on that, so it's gonna be quite busy around. Moving on, within your package, you do have a summary report for September twenty twenty, groundwater pumpage throughout the district. As reported, staff says we received thirty-two well restorations for the month. Majority of those again are, for example, wells mostly being drilled in Johnson County for probably thirty or thirty-two. We are getting quite a few of our well reports, and as required, we appreciate the first drillers being diligent, making sure that they're submitting things timely. We do have great blocking reports that we see. Going back to the summary of groundwater pumpage in the district, you know, there's constantly a footnote on there that these numbers are not final. Looking forward to having a new database of and about where we have better, more timely information, real time. So. That should be too much longer, have to be here next week to roll out another new registration on there, to find out more next week about women who build lines. It'll be the first phase, second phase, if you recall, will allow the painted side of pictures. Phase one will be door of the online recording or tell them what they know. We'll have to have a separate module somehow to pay online or they'll have this. I've included a field operation report from Michael. They've been very, very busy at the field still investigating a lot of our storage use permit applications to verify meter readings, locations of board. They're working very diligently with these applicants to clean up some of their records where they might have some of the meter readings, cross-reference with other meters, trying to get that organized. You know, I noticed also they are working on static water levels here in Johnson County and continuing that throughout the district. Two meetings, the six there I mentioned for me, we got TWCA virtually this, this. This week, and followed by our GMA meeting next week. There's also a rest meeting as well. And of course, we've been on experience with special. It is not to say that currently our violation, not in line, summary, there's no one on in my life that affected you to this presidential get. So let's hope someone has some questions that we can call out in the report.
Okay, thank you very much. Move on to item number fifteen.
I'll be brief. Hopefully working the last month on the rules. Rule committee, still working with staff on various permitting application issues. Also, our legislative stakeholders committee's been in full swing over the last month. Yes. Hopefully, if by the time we get back next month, we know we're heading on those recommendations. That's all I.
Thank you. Move to have fifteen. Open court and discussion of this committee. I've been paying on sixteen. Yes. Second way that we, in this meeting. All this play, we say aye. And it's pose, motion period, this meeting. Very good. I thought. Prairie Ranch Innovation Board of Records meeting. Recorder for the public hearing. Here. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number three.
So before us today, we have a permit application received from Aqua Texas for a proposed well to be. For a proposed well to be drilled in Johnson County at forty-two zero five Oak Drive West in Alborato. Applicant has requested this well not to exceed four thousand five hundred gallons for twenty twenty, six point five million gallons payable after. This is a new public supply well capable of producing one hundred fifty gallons per minute. It, and it will provide public water needed for water. We have reviewed this with our technical consultants and gone back and forth with applicants on additional information. And with that, I am going to hand this over to our consultant, Jane Speach, to give an update to the board on their review of the application and the required information provided on behalf of Aqua Texas Consultants, Collier and Associates. And by the way, they are present here today to speak on this permit, so we need to recognize.
Thank you, Kathy, and good morning, board. Kathy said, we've been working with the staff and Peter and.
Matt.
I'm sorry.
Matt. The other gentleman.
Oh, Matt and Mr. Sledge on working through all the details of the permit, y'all put in presentation mode, next slide. So back back one slide. So the location of the new wells are in the red, red triangle. It's four hundred and ninety six feet from the closest C C N boundary, about twenty two hundred, two thousand seven hundred fifty feet from the closest well. And that well has been spot checked in the field by Michael and along with the well up to the northwest. We've got them ID'd on this particular map as well, three seventy seven and three thirty five, if my eyesight is not failing. So anyway, those are the, those are the constraints for well spacing that are required by the rules, the closest well. Being twenty seven hundred fifty foot away with C C N boundary and for this particular public water supply well being four hundred and ninety six feet away from the well. So next slide. So. Peter and. Collier from Collier had submitted several documents, the first one being the one that he saw at the last meeting. He used in the initial application and assessment, he used information from the Myers report, which is a standard established report for. Water well parameters that is kind of an amalgamation of data across the state. And chose some of that information out of that report, which is, which is part of his assessment, next slide. And then also did a review of GAM data, pulled some information from the groundwater availability model, the Northern Trinity Woodbine model. Use those nearby water levels from a well, okay, so let's start on the top back again. On the top table there, there's an assessment in that first report of the storage properties in the GAM. That's not what we see in the GAM and so I've listed out to the side of there the actual GAM numbers that are in the, that are in the official GAM from the Water Development Board. So we pointed that out to Peter in our initial discussions and we were unclear on the, from their determination about the C C N. Distance at that point and what calculations applied to that, we also noted and that Peter had pulled available. Water levels from a well that are located, I think it's twenty nine hundred feet away from the proposed well, is it twenty nine hundred or thirty nine hundred?
Twenty nine.
Twenty nine hundred feet away from, it's kind of to the north of the of the proposed well, couldn't remember that. So those are the information that were a part of that assessment, that most recent water level information.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's thirty nine hundred.
Thirty nine hundred feet, thank you, and the, the smaller of those two and more recent water levels. Provide an available drawdown in that well twenty nine hundred foot away of four hundred and sixty. That well is completed as best we can tell in, in multiple intervals, the Hensel, Hensel, Pierceall, Houston. Or, you know, what Peter refers to in his document as a twin city, I mean, I'm sorry, twin mountain well, and so, next slide. So there was an addendum that was, that was put together by Collier again, and again, we're seeing sorativity numbers. That were different than what we saw in GAM. The second addendum for the one percent criteria yielded a distance of twenty six thousand feet. The twenty six thousand feet, that one percent calculation is basically given the numbers in the second, or in the addendum, not the second addendum, we'll talk about that in a little bit. And this addendum did not meet, of course, the twenty seven, twenty seven hundred and fifty feet to the closest well. And so. When, when we talked to them about that, they provided a second addendum, which is, next slide. Which came last week and so in this addendum, there's more analysis that was done with information from more distant wells in the Myers report in different counties. Next slide please. Okay, so and, and there was, there was some confusion about the, the distance to the C C N boundary. As far as why that particular location was chosen, it's a little bit further than the, the C C N bound, the closest C C N boundary. In the end, that doesn't matter, but it's something I wanted to point out, next slide. And the other, the other thing in this assessment was the data that was used for the spacing. Both for the well spacing and the C C N spacing, most of that was pulled from the Myers report from Tarrant County, Somerville, Ellis County. And so those are wells that are further away, I believe, some of the closer ones are, you know, fifteen, twenty mile range. And you can see that if we took time to go through all of those, all of that information, you'd see that the sorativity numbers. On those last two wells in Tarrant County at the bottom of the table, they're larger numbers than what we see in most of the wells. And so that, you know, lessens the distance that is required for, for facing and, or helps meet that criteria. And so those wells again are in Tarrant County, so we wanted to assess, you know, how that affected the calculations and next slide. So when, when we look at the information from the GAM, we see that there's about seven hundred foot of available drawdown in the Hensel. And we use, when using the information in the GAM, the transmissivity, sorativity. And, and the available drawdown in the Hensel, the, the purple circle on this map indicates that they do meet the criteria for the closest well. And the, they're just inside the closest well and then the criteria for the C C N. Is about as big as that red triangle in the middle, I can't remember the exact number, it's, I can't, I don't think we have the circle on there, but it certainly meets the criteria. For being less than ten percent of the available drawdown at the closest C C N boundary. And so given the GAM information, we can confirm that that analysis would yield appropriate spacing for the available wells. If the, if the well was screened in the Hensel only. And so that's based again on GAM data and the available drawdown that is in the GAM in twenty ten. So there's a bit of a, there's a bit of a, I guess, hydrogeologic. Interesting hydrogeologic dynamic going on here in regards to the model. Hensel has a simulated water level at the end of twenty ten and that gives us a larger available drawdown of seven hundred and sixty two feet, I believe it is. Peter, in his report and from a, you know, Water Development Board available information from the well twenty nine hundred foot to the north. Estimates an available drawdown of four hundred and sixty, so you've got less drawdown in, in a well that's screened across the Hensel, Pierceall, Houston. And you've got more, more available drawdown from the GAM calculations, the seven hundred feet, if you use the GAM, the GAM data. And so when we use that GAM data, we meet the criteria. We use the four hundred and six feet from the nearby well, we don't meet the criteria for the well. And again, it's screened across multiple intervals and instead of just the Hensel, so when we use that four hundred and six feet for the Hensel. We can't meet the criteria based on the calculations we've done. Now, if you, if you assume that the well will be screened across what Peter calls the twin mountain or the Hensel, Pierceall, Houston. And generally how that's done, and Marty, you can comment and others can comment, but, you know, you're going to drill, drill bore hole, do a log, you're going to look for the sands in those units and then you're going to screen appropriately. So it's hard to say upfront how those well, how those units will be screened. And how much water will come from each one of those units and so in conversations with Mr. Sledge and Kathy, we've gone through several analysis whereby we allocate. The application asked for one hundred and fifty G P M, we allocate a hundred G P M to the Hensel and, you know, twenty to the Pierceall and thirty to the Houston. And under certain allocations of pumping, you can meet the criteria for the data from the GAM, you could. Given, given the right allocation of pumping, you can meet those criteria, so. This is one of those instances where because of the way, you know, the well to the north with the available water level is screened. It's not clear cut in our, in our tool and the analysis that we do on the spacing is sort of based on unique aquifers. And allocations of pumping from those aquifers, so. Under the strictest sense for a Hensel well from the GAM data, the criteria could be met. Under other approaches and assumptions, the criteria would not be met. And so that is where we stand in our analysis and I'll take questions.
Yeah, yes. So. This is the learning process, this is the first application I believe we had. We're acquired, we need those basic analysis. It's a learning process for all of us. They, you, you're well aware of frustration with staff and I had, and it was non hydrogeology, I think. We look pretty black and white. Want an answer, it's a compiled space. And so. What we're mostly interested in, I think. On how do you like. Part of this student page looking for. Is learning from this experience, so as we go through with the future applications that. We get the type of engagement that we need, hopefully happening and from our own consultants. And I have at least learned through this process from you that it's not going to be as easy as we want. Because there's a number of assumptions that have to go around in front of it. And so. I, I want to express. First prediction on the staff. For future applications, we're going to get something different than we had this time to help make those decisions. I think one thing that we've talked about in the training today is having. And I don't know, maybe we can have some discussions before the public rules on whether there need to be tweaks to spacing rules itself. Or having you, your firm develop perhaps some guidance document, load chart or something. How we can expect these things to be done because. We want it to be better to report, but my question for you is, and I think I know the answer, you have at least determined that utilizing, utilizing the GAM. And. Just completing well the Hensel as well, like. And that also you think that making certain reasons assumptions on how the hundred fifty gallons per minute well capacity might be allocated between the Hensel, Pierceall and Houston. That even if we're prepared that way, utilizing the GAM data, they would supply with the space. And I, and I think that is ultimately the way we're needs to make. Everything, as we talked about last month, continuation of the past, let's hear it. Everything else was okay. I personally, you know, in, in between these board meetings, we have a lot of phone conferences, Zoom meetings and going through the stuff that you guys have submitted. I'll tell you, I mean, it might make sense to y'all side, just, but. It just didn't make sense to me. I think the last deal y'all submitted was a gamble, I don't think it's a gamble, analysis proceeded on. Further found in front of the center. But, but I'm hopeful that we can. Going forward, we can work with you, James. We need to come up with little clearer expectations on the. The type of analysis we need to decide for purposes for free. It's to, it's a well capacity test and we, you know, I know it is complicated by the fact that we're proposing to screen through three layers. But we can, what we need is to reach that, and I was also confused, it wasn't clear that I agree with the captain. Trying to tell now where the existing wells are that are needed at this consideration versus other wells that happen to be out there and. Don't matter for our. But we're just looking for, here's, here's the, here's what we're looking for. Purpose of the purpose of the analysis, these are the exact values we choose to provide you. These are the assumptions we made from how much of that one fifty would be created from. The Hensel, how much of the Hensel. Based on those three independent analyses, this is what the radius is, the ten percent, this is what the radius is, four percent. Block that on the graph, see if it goes across. Property line department, where it goes across the town, read if the existing wells are there in the same consideration or it doesn't. If it does, we need files facing executives, so we need to reduce the capacity for the well. That's, that's the type of analysis that I think staff that they, and the force that they need to make the types of decisions in the future. And we're hopeful to get to work with our applicants and their consultants through perhaps guidance that you could help develop from. Low pattern for these type of analysis that we can. Get that type of information, that's the thing back into your. Or speech and question, apologize. Don't want to. I hate to say that much, but. One application that. How to deal with the bigger phase, try to get to the ultimate answer of why. That's all I.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, Jenny, would you go over one more time, you said in one sense, they make the requirements, they didn't miss something.
Right, if you assume, if you assume the parameters that are in the GAM and you just take the Hensel by itself, assuming that they'd screen just the Hensel. Then they meet the criteria with all the information from the GAM, including the seven hundred and sixty two foot of available drawdown that the GAM provides us from a twenty ten water level estimate. If you take the water level estimate and sorativity values, you know, well, if you take the four hundred and six foot of available drawdown from the well twenty nine hundred foot away. Then it wouldn't be the criteria for spacing. And the, the issue there was that that well's not screened just in the Hensel, it's screened across all three intervals. It's screened across all three intervals, which because the Houston and Pierceall and are, are used more generally. And a lot of wells are screened across there, those water levels are, are low. Thank you.
Do you have two of the people who want to speak at this hearing also? Have been, have you, Peter, you are live.
We're, we're just here to answer any questions the board may have.
I did have a question for one that on the
Somebody can come up to the mic, please.
The table was up there earlier related to the Myers Report, we pulled information from Tarrant, Somerville, Ellis County. And my question is, could you not find pertinent information closer?
Uh, no, there was no information pertinent closer that had sorativity values. The table only shows wells that had kind of transmissivity and sorativity. There were some transmissivity values in the center of the county, but I didn't show that data or use it in coming up.
Okay, and the second question I have brought up, I change, is in relation to screening, can you talk about that? What was the screening?
The, the plan is to screen across the whole twin mountain formation. Link out the shale zones. But we know that certain, till we actually drill the well, you do a well. Okay. That's the type.
I think it's the general managers' recommendation based on the district's hydrogeologist's determination that well as proposed, given reasonable assumptions of using the GAM data, will comply with the spacing regulations. To go ahead and
motion made in saying that we approve this application. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion here. No, uh, no evidences. We will return the public hearing and open our regular meeting back up so I can go over the agenda. Eleven thirty nine, we have done the public hearing. Eleven thirty nine, we will go back to regular meeting and go to item seventeen. Open the house, bring the opening of a new district office. More of the celebration. The district is celebrating the opening of a new district office with a ribbon cutting ceremony, unitly after conclusion of board meeting. Public is welcome to attend this social event. A memorial presentation will also be made in the honor of our late Dennis Aaron Office, District Director from Johnson County. He recently passed away after over a decade of significant area public service in the district board of directors. Form of the board as the record may be president of this social event, but no district will be discussed or transacted by the board nor will it take any action. So first time on. Both motion made in saving the real journalists meeting, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed? Motion here. Thank you very much.